Celebrate what Jesus is doing throughout the nation and rise up to answer his call on your life. To serve the poor, heal the broken, free the captives, and bring joy to those in need. Find hope, encouragement, and motivation through Overcomers TV. This inspiring network features everyday people and ministries across America who are putting God's love in action. Tune into Overcomers TV on your favorite app or streaming platform. It's time to overcome.
Hey guys, thanks for tuning into another interview on Overcomers TV Live. I'm Pastor Chuck and have the joy, the honor, and the privilege to introduce to you some of our ministry partners and friends, our next guest, Councilor Janice Giacchino here in Farmington, New Mexico. Janice, thank you for jumping on today.
Thank you Pastor Chuck. I appreciate the opportunity.
Yep, we've been friends for a while now and I just love your heart to serve. You certainly are an overcomer based on 1 John 5:4. It says, "Whoever is born of God overcomes." And we focus on the second half of the verse, and this is the victory that has overcome the world, our faith. So we're super excited about what you're doing locally here in Farmington. We've got your website up here and as one of our city councilors, you've been doing a great job. And there's elections coming up and there's a whole lot of Christians who don't like politics and they try to keep it separate. But anyway, I'd love to introduce you to our viewers and hear a little bit about your faith journey and a little bit about why you do what you do there.
Forgive me, I'm writing a note. I like what you said about there are some Christians who don't like politics. However, that is part of my faith journey.
Yeah.
I love what I do because I get to serve people and show a different type of politic, if you will. The position that I have the opportunity to serve in is not a partisan position. So I make choices that affect every single person. I get to serve every single person who comes into Farmington, New Mexico.
Yeah, that's it. So, and that's it, the partisan thing, you know, there's, it seems like on every issue, it's North Pole, South Pole. But again, your, your thinking is what's best for our city, growth, things of that nature. And you know, you're married, your husband, it's a family thing. You spend a lot of time meeting a lot of different people. You're, you're in the mix, right? So, you know, talk a little bit about your role and your involvement. What's a day, a day in the life look like for you?
Oh, every day is different and that is very exciting because I never know what's coming my way. Granted, I have many appointments that find their way onto my calendar, but it's never the same day twice. And I really enjoy that facet. For example, one day can be budget meetings where we're talking about numbers all day long. And then another day I get to go to a school and read to children. Or another day I am visiting different community facilities. For example, the library or a wastewater treatment plant. So it is something different every single day.
Yeah, for sure. And at the end of the day, there's a lot of different people. And we talked a little bit about districts. Do you want to explain maybe some of the districts that are in our area? And yeah.
Sure, I'll break it down. In case some viewers aren't familiar with the government structure of the city of Farmington, municipalities can be set up a bit different. And Farmington is a mayor council manager form of government. And what that means is the city council is the legislative body for the municipality. In our case, the mayor only votes in effort to break a tie. So a lot of the decisions rely heavily on that city council. Then the city manager takes care of the day-to-day operations of that. And his staff reports to us and then we make decisions based on their requests or their needs, whatever that may be. There are four city councilors, each divided into different districts. And in Farmington, District 1 is kind of the southern part of town. District 2 is the middle west. District 3 is the middle east and District 4 covers the northern part of town, which includes both high schools.
Wow, very cool, very cool. So, you know, I have your website up and it's very informative, talks a little bit about you and roles and responsibilities. And I noticed there's some priorities listed like economic diversification, public safety, infrastructure, outdoor recreation, arts and culture. What would you like to talk about first?
Wow, so many of those are a favorite topic. Let's start with arts and culture. Our civic center, Tota Theater, the Lion's Wilderness Outdoor Amphitheater. We have shows that we bring into town often to celebrate the different types of arts. It's not just see a theatrical production, but there are musical acts, there are cultural acts. And we're very proud of that. Coming up, if I shamelessly put in a plug here, Christmas Carol. We'll be viewing in two weekends from now. We just had Little Shop of Horrors. That was great fun. The Tota Theater is an office for companies that want to film actual movies or TV shows here in Farmington. There are offices they can rent and then the theater and a screen where they can view and work on their projects.
Sounds like my kind of people.
Yes, yes. So arts and culture, that was more of an entertainment, but culture, we have a rug museum. We have an Indian center. We're always looking ways to celebrate our natural beauty that we have here and highlight the land and bis dye.
Yeah.
Arts and culture is very beautiful. We're very.
A lot of history and culture in this area for sure. The Navajo people as well and you know, part of my job is Navajo Nation outreach. And you know, this area I guess is also known for oil and gas too, right?
It is. It is. That oil and gas is near and dear to many hearts here because it is the industry that keeps us going. Through jobs, through tax revenue, we rely very heavily on oil and gas and the energy that it provides for us.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. What other priorities on the list that we want to talk about? Let's.
Economic diversification was first on that list.
Yeah.
And because we are experiencing some challenges within the oil and gas industry, we are looking to other ways of expanding our tax base and encouraging individuals to move into Farmington. And we're doing that by highlighting that art and culture aspect that we just talked about and outdoor recreation. We have the three rivers for fishing. We have beautiful landscapes for mountain biking. There are, there's so much to do here. Golf, you can ski not too far from here. And that's something that we're very proud of. And Farmington has over 50 parks for people to spend time with their families and their children or walk their dog and enjoy the beautiful nature that we have here.
That's good. Well, let's switch gears just a little bit because we, you know, we talked about people showing up to vote. And I know you've got some things to talk about, maybe even some statistics. But you know, when we think about voting, it's always like, alright, who's going to be president of our country? You know, like, you know, the Biden-Trump thing, I mean, even people who've never voted before starting to register just so they can check off the box on who they like or don't like. But on a city level, you know, why are the, the numbers not what they should be? Do people even know that there's some important topics that you want to hear what people want, right? I mean, you represent the people. So where do you want to go from there?
I think a lot of people don't understand exactly what role local government plays. And what's interesting about that to me is that local government touches people's lives every single day. From the water you drink to the roads that you drive on, to the park that you recreate in. Those decisions are made by your local representatives, not always by your state representatives or even federal, you know, congress or senators. And so those elections tend to get more of the attention, if you will. However, every single day, your life is affected by your local government. I'm working on a research project right now where I've been going back and examining how, how some things came to be. Our airport, Farmington Lake, our civic center, the swimming pools, and examining how people voted and how many people showed up to vote. And some of those results are funny. They're funny because there are some things that only pass by a few votes. And I won't go into too much detail there, but in the city of Farmington, the population is approximately 46,000.
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand, 127 individuals per the 2020 census. And I called the county clerk just this morning who told me that there are 27,765 registered voters within the city of Farmington. Now that makes sense because of how many people may be under 18 and not eligible to vote just yet. However, when I was elected the very first time in 2018, only 2,863 votes were cast in that entire election. Now that included a mayoral election and council for districts 3 and 4. But that's very close to only about 10% of people who could vote, who actually showed up to vote to choose individuals who are going to be making these decisions.
Right. Yeah, that's not good. One out of 10 actually stopped what they were doing and voting. I agree, you know, we're all probably more busy now than ever before. We're managing a lot. Single parenting, you know, there's just not to help with the excuses, but these are some of the things that people may be justifying not showing up or again, maybe just not knowing what to vote for. So when you have two people running and you don't know either one of them, and this is one of my thoughts. I mean, I don't want to vote for the wrong person. I mean, do I vote for the name that sounds the coolest? I mean, that's how I got voted for in, in middle school council, right? They thought, hey Chuck Reece, cool name. In sixth grade, I was president of the school just because there was a big table of kids that thought my name was cool. You know, anyway, but you know, are we supposed to do a little bit of research? Again, it takes a little bit of effort to find out what are the issues and who stands for what before you even vote, right? Because if you don't know those things, you don't even know who you're voting for. Does that, you know, talk about that, yeah?
I love to talk about that because there is a personal responsibility that exists when we, before we even go into that ballot box. And I encourage people to do their research. But a lot of people don't even know where to go to do that. There isn't like one-stop shopping to learn about all of the candidates, especially when it's a nonpartisan situation. Because there isn't one group of individuals that's responsible for sharing that with would-be voters. So, oh, you and I have talked before about the blessing of social media and also the curse of social media. But this is where it can be a good thing because that is where most candidates share their platforms and talk about themselves. We now have the ability to have websites. There's so many opportunities for media and access to information that we don't know exactly where to go. But I believe that the voter has responsibility to do what they can to find out what they can before they get into that ballot box. And then they're frozen because they don't know who to choose. And I would just encourage somebody to Google, Google the name. You never know what'll come up. A LinkedIn profile, a Facebook profile, or maybe they were acknowledged in the paper a while back. Do your research.
And I hope you don't mind me, you know, tooting your horn a little bit, but love you and your husband's heart because you guys serve with us here at Four Corners Home for Children. You volunteer your time to be on the board of directors because we're taking care of children. It's a, you know, Christian nonprofit, not funded by government dollars. It's all private donors. And we're taking care of children, celebrating 70 years, but you're on the board of directors. And you give up your time, again, you're very busy to be a part of that. And you know, I think a lot of people have trust issues. I mean, and we should because we shouldn't trust everybody. There's some bad guys out there, right? But you know, politics and politicians, I don't know if we're at an all-time high, but because of all the news outlets and media and people just getting found out doing wrong things. Do you think there's a percentage of people that just don't trust anybody who's in the political arena at all? Do they have trust issues?
I would agree with that, absolutely. I don't necessarily like the label of being a politician, but that is what I am. I do have to politic and the best part of that is networking and building those relationships. And that is where the trust comes in. Where do you spend your time? Who do you spend your time with? For me personally, I choose to spend my time when I'm not wearing my hat as a city counselor. I serve on the board of Four Corners Home for Children. I'm also part of the Rotary. I am also very active, involved in Bible study and I love being around people. And so who are you around? Are you around other individuals that people see as trustworthy, leading by example?
Integrity is a big word, right?
And I hope that in my service, I can dispel some of those negative connotations with people who are politicians or government officials by showing them that I am not one of them. I am going to serve with my heart first and I'm serving my Lord first before anybody else. And I hope that that shows through in the way that I conduct myself and where I spend my time.
That's true. And you know, I know there has been even some pastors who got in politics. And there was even last week after, before we, when we started scheduling this interview, Bill Redman, retired congressman for the state of New Mexico. And he actually, now he's retired, he's older, he's trying to encourage other Christians to run for office. And again, the whole Christians like, oh, politics, well, there's the old saying, don't talk about politics or religion. And we bought into that. We're not sharing our faith and we're not talking about politics. Probably the two most important topics on the planet, who's God? And what's going on in my neighborhood and my city, like my country, right? And who's running the show and how do we, you know, make our vote count and make wise decisions together? But the enemy kind of, because people argue and they fight and they ruin relationships over differences of opinion. So I think, you know, we all need a good lesson on how to keep a good conversation going, agreeing to disagree without ruining the relationship. But those are some important topics and I do believe, and I'll end with this, the separation of church and state was meant to say that the government will not govern the church. The church is run by Jesus Christ. He's the head of the church. He died, he rose again. It's His church, it's His bride, and the government won't govern the church. But now they flip it around thinking that means that the church shouldn't influence government. So in your journey, do you run into others who have strong faith and convictions that serve in the community?
I'm very fortunate that I do. My colleagues in probably any capacity that I serve in are all Christians and they are all serving with a Christ-like heart. That is very fortunate because we can have open conversations like this. There isn't a suppression of we can't talk about politics and we can't talk about our faith. We do and we do so openly. And I couldn't agree more that at dinner tables, we do need to be having those conversations. And it's okay to get offended. It's okay to maybe examine somebody else's opinion and have questions and dive deeper into those questions so you can learn more about yourself and more about other people. That's how you learn to serve people where they are because you never know what somebody else is going through or where they're coming from. We do need to have those conversations.
Right. And you know, the Beatitudes Sermon on the Mount, Jesus spoke, blessed is he, blessed are the merciful, they'll find mercy. Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be filled. Blessed, 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 right? Blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God. And, and then that word blessed is such a Christian-y or church word, but it really means happy and content. And which is really what God wants. That's the goal, happy, content with what you have. And the world's message is you don't have enough. We need to sell you more, right? Marketing, everybody's trying to sell you something. But to be blessed and happy and content, it takes some effort. There's a lot of things that will try to steal your joy. I just don't even know how people do any job without faith and a relationship with God. I mean, how could you do your job without it?
I don't know that I could. I really don't. It is what drives me. Loving your neighbor and making, being a part of making somebody else's life better. That really drives me. Or making sure that people are safe and have access to resources. And I, I wouldn't be able to do that because some of those decisions can get very difficult. Or we run into roadblocks and we need to learn how to overcome those various roadblocks and why those roadblocks may be coming before us. And there are many times that I have been on my knees asking God what direction to go in because I want to make sure that I do what is right for the most people in this community.
Right. For those who may not know the book of James, he says, whoever lacks wisdom, let him ask God for wisdom and He will give it to him liberally, but not without doubting. Because doubting, the one who doubts shouldn't expect to receive anything from the Lord. He goes on to say. But you know, wisdom is those things, you know, God's not, I sometimes think he's doing a heavy lifting, but he's coaching us, leading us, like you saying, to making a right decision. And there's some good decisions and then there's better decisions and then there's the best decision, good, better, best. And then there's some certainly things we don't want to do because we know that doesn't work and it's going in the wrong direction. But you know, sometimes good isn't good enough, right? We want to get to better and even the best. And that's why there's safety in a multitude of counselors. That must be one of your favorite verses.
Well, as I mentioned, I'm very fortunate that the people I serve with are very like-minded in their faith walk. That is very helpful because there have been moments where we are praying together prior to a meeting or we are praying together prior to a decision. And that's comforting. That provides a lot of comfort that I know that they are being guided by the same values as I.
That's good. That's good. So let's talk a little bit more about your campaign. So obviously campaigns are expensive and you're probably not in it for the money. But how can people get involved, support you, maybe even learn a little bit more about you? I thank you for sharing your heart today, but how can people get involved?
If people want to get involved with the campaign, the first thing I'll ask for are their prayers, for sure. Second would be their vote, getting out and filling in that bubble next to my name on the ballot if they live in District 4. And even if they don't, there are so many other wonderful candidates that are on that ballot that need your support as well. For my particular campaign, anyone who wants to reach out to me personally can do so at the website, electjanisjacchino@gmail.com and I will answer that personally. If they want to help by knocking on doors or making phone calls or even displaying a yard sign, I'm happy to deliver it. Election day isn't that far away, so our time is a bit short, but I appreciate any support. It warms my heart to know that people are willing to help me help them.
Yeah, looks like you're endorsed by the Farmington Professional Firefighters Association.
Yes, yes. This is the second time they have endorsed me. And hint, hint, I'm expecting another endorsement tomorrow. That press release hasn't dropped yet. But for any viewers who may be local, please be paying attention to my website and social media channels for another endorsement that's coming tomorrow. And as I mentioned, I love being able to work with community organizations and that support is paramount because we need to have those open lines of communication so that we can be on the same page to help serve together.
Right. Love the picture and it talks about being a proud native New Mexican. So you were actually born in this state and raised in Farmington, right?
That is correct. I was born in Grants, New Mexico. And my family moved here before I was about two years old. And so this is all I know. This is the only community I've lived in.
So back then, it was more than, less than 46,000 or was, has it always been that? I mean, I know, I'm new, I'm from Florida. I'm about four years, Thanksgiving will be four years that I've been here. But was it bigger when it was more gas and oil going on?
We've, it's an ebb and flow. And when you say bigger, population has remained approximately the same, probably in the lower 40s range. Again, in the 80s, I was too young to know what was going on. But there was a big boom and then there was a bust with regard to oil and gas around the 80s. But I have seen Farmington become very busy. And then I've also seen it kind of go through these challenging times after the 2008, 2009 economic suppression back then. And then of course, COVID was very challenging. But Farmington, as I recall, has always been about the same size and we're working on that. We do want to grow. We do want to expand opportunities for people to come here with that outdoor recreation that we talked about and even promoting this as a retirement community.
Yeah, amen. And there's been some folks who've made an impact on the world from Farmington. It's amazing, my wife and I have traveled around the world. We've been to Israel twice. But when we were there, the person who, at the Airbnb right next to us was from Farmington. It was kind of crazy. Everywhere we go, we run into somebody who knows Farmington. I was like, this isn't like, you know, you have to go through it. This is like a destination. And even the Navajo Bible, a lot of people don't know this, was translated here in Farmington from English. You know, so we have the Navajo Bible and New Testament and the entire Bible. But that's, I think that work started in the 50s with a group of folks here and they finished it here, from what I understand. But so there are a lot, we're right up against the reservation, right? The San Juan River is kind of the, and we have Shiprock about 30 minutes from here and Gallup, two hours from here. And a lot of Navajo folks come in off the reservation to visit our Walmarts and stuff like that. Do you want to mention a little bit about the cross-culture or the mixed culture we have here in Farmington?
Absolutely. It is a very uniquely situated community that we border Native American reservation. A lot of communities don't have that luxury. And I do call it a luxury because the Navajo culture is so beautiful. Their language was very helpful to our nation during war times.
The CO2.
Absolutely, and not to the CO2.
We left, yeah.
Yes, we're coming up on Veterans Day, so that is on my heart to make sure that we give honor to those individuals who served us. And as I mentioned, I was raised here, so I don't know any different. And when I go somewhere else and you explain that you live next to a Native American reservation, you have an opportunity to really expand on that conversation and talk about what that is like and the culture that we are surrounded by. And it is very unique and it is so very beautiful. I love learning about the rug weaving and jewelry making and ceremonies and the dancing. I love the dancing and the beautiful costumes and.
A lot of great tradition, for sure.
Yes, very talented artisans in our community. And they do come into Farmington being the kind of place where you can shop and go to the grocery store and see the doctor or many people even work here. The college, our hospital, even through the city of Farmington. We have a lot of opportunities for people to travel here so that they can work and then go back and be on their land and be among their family.
Yeah. And you know, we're doing a lot of outreach as well. And I don't want to give away all your treasures in heaven, but you and your husband own a couple laundromats, one in Shiprock, the Dene Laundry. And you've made it available for us on Mondays to go out and give out free coffee and our Navajo neighbor magazines and to see how we can pray with people and see if families need help. So you're really letting God use you and your, your business. I mean, we as Christians realize we, God owns everything. And whatever He's given us, our time, our treasure, our talents, we're just managers of it, stewardship. Talk a little bit about that, stewardship.
I love being able to use something as random as a laundromat to reach other people. Where else is someone going to be stuck for a couple of hours of their day where they can be staring at a screen in their hands? Or they can be talking to someone such as you and learning about Jesus. I love being able to have that opportunity available to our relatives and to our neighbors out there in Shiprock. And you're right, those businesses are a blessing for our family. But we fill in a desire to turn that blessing around and use it for the good of others.
Yeah, amen. That's loving your neighbor. And when we're done, we're going to close with our little 80-second video about Four Corners Home for Children, which talks a little about Navajo Nation outreach as well as all the other programs that are under our umbrella. But before we do that, is there anything else the Lord put on your heart to share with us today?
Only that I hope we have an opportunity to do this again so that we can talk about service for Christ and maybe some of the other ministries that you and I are both a part of. And hoping that together we can reach as many people.
Amen. And get out there and vote.
Yes, please, please. November 7th, early voting ends on Saturday. Please go visit those polls.
Yeah, every vote counts. And you mentioned it earlier, you didn't get into the details, but there was some that just won by a few votes, right?
Yes, there are some stories here in Farmington where there's some city councilors, one lost by one vote, another one lost only by seven votes. Even some facilities that wouldn't have been built had a couple of people voted the other way. So it really does matter.
Right. I know I'm a pastor and I'm supposed to be really, really compassionate, but I sometimes can be harsh when I said, listen man, if you don't vote, you have no right to complain. Is that harsh?
Yes and no. Yes and no. Maybe harsh in the delivery, but not harsh in the intent. Yes, you can say it, but maybe, maybe with different words that I know.
Well, that's the art of a politician. You could say something they don't like to hear, but you say it with a smile and you have a way of delivering things without, even when you have to bring a hard truth, you can say it with a smile and you know, with a little bit of sugar around it, right? I guess.
Precisely, precisely. Precisely, precisely. You can still love somebody even if you disagree with what they have to say.
Amen, that's awesome. Well, love your heart, appreciate what you do. And uh, would love to pray for you and your husband and your family, um, as we come up on, in our city. Um, we pray together.
Please do.
Alright, Father, thank you to Janice and Brandon and just uh, everyone that's running. We know people have ideas and intentions and ultimately, God, we just pray for wisdom for everyone who's serving. That we do what's right for, in, in your eyes as well as um, for the people. And I know it's tough to be in a position where sometimes there's tempting to be people pleasers, but we want to be God pleasers. We want to do what's right and please you, since you love us so much. You died for us, you've given us life, abundant life. You've blessed us in so many ways. We can't say thank you enough and increase our faith, our trust in you and also in people uh, to do what's right and encourage one another. So thank you for our friendship and again, our partnership in the gospel. We pray you get all the glory for it in Jesus' name. Amen and amen. Awesome, very cool. Well, if they haven't seen it before, here's our little video about our ministry. Thanks, Janice.